Who's in charge?
I'm in charge.
You're in, okay.
Yeah, we went there.
So we need to call the meeting. I think we have a forum by this much. Public comment. You have public?
It's me and Libby.
Okay, great. No public. Looks like first real agenda item is the approval of the minutes for May fourteenth and May twenty eighth. Anyone have any changes, comments, special revisions?
Justin, I know there was that on the second set, the twenty eighth. We don't list, I remember Benita arrived late. So she's not listed as in attendance, but she's listed throughout, like when she contributed. So I just thought that was the only thing.
Also, I just realized that I wasn't at the twenty eighth meeting, so I can't vote on it, which does that mean we can't vote on it?
No.
You can vote.
You you could.
Yeah.
You can.
If you want to, but you don't have to. You have a quorum.
Right.
Oh, just, okay, cool.
Yeah.
All right. So is there a motion on the May twenty eighth?
We'll approve.
Second.
Right. Their motion on the May twenty eighth.
Are we just gonna approve them as amended opinion in his name? Time motion to approve as amended opinion in his name.
I can second.
I second. I abstained. All right. Great, great. Uh, next is a hiring update.
HR manager here. So I'm excited to walk you through this. I need to present. We go into presentation mode, so I'll definitely have a moment for questions and definitely welcome those. So just a quick hiring update for you guys. It's been an exciting ride since January twenty ninth when I joined. So let's just look really quickly. I'll point out that this image over here is from our monday.com account, where we've been tracking like the progress in the hiring. And I just looked at it the other day and it's we've hired fifty five FTEs since January first. In some cases, that includes, you know, like split roles. So that's probably closer to about sixty five to seventy new staff. Which is so exciting. I'm again, has just contributed to this delightful ride we've been on. So the biggest team for hiring was public services team with twenty FTEs. Since January second being programs and events with nine. So that includes the creative technologists in the building sixty one space. So we're almost completely hired up there. And then most teams had about four FTEs that they were hiring. So literacy outreach, admin, collection services at facilities, and I'm part of that admin hire thing. So I'm very that. We're currently fully staffed at the main library, which is a huge, huge thing. Tim's very excited about that. Nobo, so opening for in advance of next week, and then Meadows as well. And then we've hosted five new employee on boardings with like so, so many people, so many bright new faces, countless T-shirts given away, packets, things like that. We'll talk a little bit more kind of what we. And that's just a quick overview, kind of high level. As far as key roles that have been hired, some of these are actually pretty recent. So we just made an offer last week accepted for a main library manager. That's been a really key position for us, and there was a lot of time and attention put into that. So we're really excited about Thomas and Lynette, who will be joining us in July. The team's really excited about him.
Where's he coming from?
I don't remember to be honest, but Lafayette.
Oh, mobile.
I'm remembering that now. So lots of good experience there and Tim did really good job of checking references and kind of connecting with his network to understand like who are who are going to be a good fit. So like glowing rubies for this person. So lots of experience. So they kind of know, they know, they know what they're what they're coming to. So that's great. Creative technologists, this has been a really unique role to hire for. It's an interesting blend of like artistic and science backgrounds. And so sometimes that can be really challenging to find, like, where do we find these people? Yeah, what question? What does a creative technologist do? Great question. People that serve the patrons and teach classes in building sixty one and the maker space. So they, you know, in a lot of cases, they know how to run laser printers or three D, three D printing with laser cutting, is what I mean, wood shop, things like that. But they also know how to teach a sewing class. Or maybe they're painting on the side, something like that. So they're very well rounded individuals, but you have to go into really niche platforms to find them. So that's what we did. So we connected with woodworking communities and talked to former teachers. We talked to, oh gosh, I talked to all sorts of different maker spaces and connected with people. And ultimately, it was like a very successful thing and we're just really stoked about that team. So we have one more seat to fill of the four that we needed, and that's more on like the woodworking side of things. So I actually got to reach out to somebody who was the chair of the Ladies of the Lath. Charming thing I've ever seen. Hooked us up and sent to like her network of people. So we had a lot of woodworkers, but also specifically female woodworkers apply for the roles. So we're stoked. So it's, yeah, it's a cool role and it's like been techsical, technical mixed with like you have to have a teacher's heart. So you really have to have the right set of skills. So it's fun to fun to do that. But and then I'm also really excited about our archive manager. She starts in three weeks, Carolyn. Again, another niche role to hire for really connecting with like archival places. Lots of good resources on that. She is going to be a great fit and that team is stoked. So that's been huge. We still need to hire for one more kind of miss.
Yes, but that's a new role. That's a brand new position.
Exactly. So some of the fun ones, I mean, this is a really high level look at the things. I mean, we've hired so many library specialists, many librarians, lots of materials handlers. So we've been really hiring like across the board. But these are some of the new recent ones that have been kind of key for us. Key roles in progress. So we're still working on this, but in the final stages on most of these things. So public services director, I just had a first interview with an applicant. We went through Bradbury Miller, which is a third party recruiting firm that specializes in live and recruiting. It was a long process with them, so I don't know that we're going to be doing it in the future. I think we just need a little bit more timeliness and control. But they have delivered some really good applicants for the public services director. First applicant that we interviewed today is coming from Broome Field. Really, really solid applicant, and we have four more on Thursday and Friday. So we'll we'll kind of we're doing like the interim vetting and then we'll hand it off to David to kind of pick up the process with the final hiring committee. So I anticipate that'll probably be happening in the next three weeks or so. Key, key role. So we're encouraged by that. Youth Services Manager, they're doing the final interviews this week. So with the interim director, the interim manager Shannon, and then Tim on the public services side of things. We're a little unclear on how that's going to shake out. That's been a tough role to recruit for. So there could potentially be another round of pool applicants that we need to go for. So stay tuned on that. But we just, we're trying to really slow to hire on that one. We want to make the right decision. We won't want to be rash. So stay tuned on that piece. That kind of stuff happens to, you know, we had to do with that with the creative technologists as well. And then we're kicking off the gun barrel manager in July. So we're just doing the final touches on the job description there. And then more of the gun barrel stuff is going to happen towards the end of the year. So, yeah, we're excited. We're excited. Any questions on any of those key roles before we move forward?
Does the Youth Services Manager work across all the libraries or are they specific here to me?
They do. So, yeah, it's it's an important role and they collaborate so with programs and events really heavily. So it's it's an important thing to get right. So. Bright spot. Okay, so these are my anecdotes. I'm sure people have like other ones, but I just thought I'd kind of bring this to your guys' attention. A lot of people thank me and can't believe that we've hired that many people in a short run. That's not because of me. That's because of the staff. Like I've played a strategic role and really advise. I've been a part of like some of the hiring committees, but they have been amazing. So just how thoughtful, how involved. They just figure stuff out. They know how to do things. They ask questions. They've been great. It's been really organic to include sixty five roughly new people into an existing culture. I think that has a lot to do with just the very nature of libraries. Welcoming spaces by nature, customer service oriented, helpful. You know, not gatekeepers. They just want, they want people to find what they need. So I think that's kind of been exciting to see. You know, it can be pretty jarring to hire that many people in a short run. We haven't gotten it perfect in every time, but that's gonna happen. So I'm pretty excited about that. We have a conversation in our new employee onboarding where we talk about the mission and values and really encourage people to visit that and use that on like day to day basis and find their own personal connection with it. And there've been just like really beautiful kind of conversations that have happened in that process and you can see people connecting with it and then setting forth on their journey. So it's it's just been kind of fun to see. I had three jumpsuited, all jumpsuited, creative technologists come and ask question about. They were just like this adorable trio. It's like liver and insurance. Loved it. And there's just like, there's just so much fun, excitement there. We were in an interview with our outreach manager, Susanna. I encourage you guys to get to know her. She's an absolute delight and a complete powerhouse. You know, she's worked in other countries. She's worked in global communities. She's like brokered unions and like Venezuela and been, you know, what is it like? She's just been in some really crazy situations. So she's really fun to work with and has had great ideas. And then just anecdotally, like I know some staff, it's helped, you know, having a job here has helped keep them in this country. And I mean, that's just the best. So some bright spots.
Does the library sponsor?
I don't think we current, I don't know, we haven't really had the conversation on whether we're going to. We don't at present. But she has a social security number, so she's okay as far as that. But it's she wasn't quite sure if she was is going to be able to stay here and there's a lot weighing on that. And she's been an excellent, excellent fit to the finance team. So. Okay, so that was a really fast overview. What other questions can I answer about like what's upcoming or anything like that?
Thank you. I mean, we've been wondering about hiring over the years. So I appreciate that. I mean,
very cool. It's very cool. I would say if I had to pick like a goal for what this year is looking like in terms of supporting the team, it's resources and consistency. Everybody has been doing so well with their own resources for so long. We're trying to make it a really consistent process so that it's equitable for inside parties, for outside parties, things like that. So, you know, just trying to work through that kind of stuff, but everybody's been pretty game for it and hungry for guidance. So it's been fun.
Do you have a feel for what? I mean, obviously, we're in this big bubble, getting all these new roles hired. Do you have a feel for what kind of the steady state hiring will look like based on attrition and stuff going forward?
I don't. I don't. And that's a great question. And that's something that I'm really looking forward to in like year two or three when we have more data, because we don't have any study data from the city in terms of what that might look like. Just baseline, I typically count, I I don't think it's going to be quite as high here because I come from the agency side, the marketing agency, which is typically twenty five to thirty percent. That's pretty high. Normal though. And that just based on the tenure that I've seen, like the average tenure here, I sincerely doubt it's going to be that. But I think we're going to look at what average it's going to be over a year and then potentially like seasonality or have different attrition in certain types of roles. So for a materials handler, the attrition's probably going to be, we should expect it to be higher because that's a baseline position. Whereas you know, in a manager or a higher level role like a librarian, we wouldn't want to see it that high. So I think a lot's going to depend in like year two and three. Great questions. That's the kind of stuff I can't wait for. I'm looking at that.
One question.
Oh, yeah.
The workforce in general, do we have anybody with DACA status?
With DACA status? Not that I'm aware of. Nobody has made me aware of that presently. So.
I asked just because one of these days we're gonna, like we prepared to be able to keep that personnel in.
Yeah, it's definitely something to get on my radar. So. Okay, all right. I'll let you guys proceed.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Libby's been one of my bright spots. Credit for a lot of that, but a lot of the consistency and just like. It's January.
Yeah.
So you're
Not very long.
Just over six months. Congratulations.
Thank you. Has, I just, I mean, everybody knows notorious agencies. This job has kind of saved my life, so I'm very, very happy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And then I'm always available for questions if you need anything.
Policy review next. All right. Next up is library policies for meeting.
We just have two simple policies tonight and then a third that I'm going to turn over to Kim to talk to you about. So we're running through our list of policies and two came together because they're somewhat related. And they had very minor changes recommended by staff. So hopefully you had a chance to see those. Is there any questions or feedback on those two policies? The community bulletin board policy and the distribution of community information?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, it's pretty much a find replacement for restrict.
Yep.
Yeah.
And and you would like us to pass these this evening? Yeah, so if you can. Be great. And we could check them off our list.
Absolutely. There are motion.
We want them together or separately? You care?
I don't.
Motion to approve both the community bulletin board policy and the distribution of community information policy.
Second motion.
The discussion, you think I'm gonna need? All in favor?
Great, last. Do you want to say if words about the?
I can do that. So I think you all know that the the state has adopted this accessibility policy for webpages. Which just boggles my mind. I don't, I don't get it, but I don't have to because Amy's here. And this is a resolution that we put together with some other district attorneys to, if you approve this and the two exhibits, the second exhibit is is very incomplete that Amy would have to look at that. And it can be very, very simple. It's just a plan for covering the next year. If you adopt that and then post that that plan and a quarterly report on your website, you buy another year. So it gets us into twenty twenty five. There was a whole new agency created in the state that's been working on the regulations for this. And it's just been a slow, difficult process. So we're recommending you approve this, get it posted on your website, and then Amy can work along. We talked a little earlier about connecting up with some other library districts until we reach the the point where we satisfy the regulations. Once the regulations stop moving.
So at this point, all we're basically doing is resolving to at some point implement accessibility plan.
Yeah.
Slash.
Yeah, and there is a, there's a digital accessibility policy here. Essentially what it says is we're working to make it accessible. This may could. This didn't come out of the last session. This is previous year? Previous year. Yep. Yeah. So the previous year, they created the agency, passed all the laws, but the agency really didn't get going until probably mid-January. And if you look at their website, it's huge and it's all so technical that it means nothing to me. So it's been a slow process. Couple of private companies have come in and started providing these services, one out of LA in particular called Streamline. That is picking up a lot of the work, but I think you have, you have good enough people here that you can make it happen without that. And if not, we, my firm entered into a contract with Streamline so that we can use their services if it becomes necessary through the through the firm to make further improvements. So we'll see. It's a great, it's a great thing, but it's very difficult to to get in place.
Well, last month you all with the accessibility statement, and that's been posted on the website. And that included, one of the things, the criteria for meeting this was to provide a mechanism for patrons to be able to request accommodations for anything. So that's been done. And also Amy's team has done a kind of preliminary review of our websites and fixed any kind of obvious problems. Now it's like digging down deep into the documents and making sure that those are accessible.
See, that that report alone is good enough to buy you the the time until next year. And one more. The big concern here is that the statute provides attorney's fees and fines if anyone cannot access the website. So the the real concern is some lawyers are going to realize that, get involved, and then there's going to be a bunch of lawsuits. So we'll buy another year before that becomes a problem.
I was just curious about, so like on two E that talks about like kind of the plan and the timeline. So like this says, the the plan will be updated for the starting July first, twenty twenty fourth. So is that, do we have like a is it just kind of floating out there when we'll eventually have the plan or?
Yeah, if you look at Exhibit A one. That that's just a suggestion for a plan with a bunch of things we could think of.
Right.
But at this point, what Jennifer just said would be good enough.
Okay.
To say that we're working on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Covered everything that's obvious and we're digging deeper. That's all you need. And Kim, when you say that there's there's an incentive in here for trialers to go after this. Give me an example of the plaintiff would look like. The plaintiff would be someone maybe blind, hearing impaired. And, you know, you get a group of of personal injury lawyers or or constitutional rights lawyers who get a bevy of those people and away we go. And there's, you know, there's pretty hefty fines, thirty five hundred dollars for per incident. There's so once that ball starts rolling, be a lot of trouble. That can't happen in this interim period. We know. Year before. Yeah, so right now, July is the deadline, but this will buy you another year. Because nobody's ready, but I shouldn't say it. Some people are ready, but even that, because it's such a complex thing, at least to me, there's going to be ambiguity where you can't access something for whatever reason, and you need to be able to correct all of those things or be able to say, nothing you do. So one of the things we ran into very quickly was an inability to take old PDFs and make them accessible. So we ended up telling our clients, just don't post them. So we start today using different saving methods and all the old stuff, just don't post it, but then create that that person who can be contacted to say, I need minutes from five years ago. And then they're mailed to sent by some other means.
Is there much overlap between the state law on this and like federal regulations around accessibility for internet?
Let me answer to that.
Something I need to work on in a former life.
Yeah, I I would bet they're probably very.
And when you say the accessibility statement's already posted on the website, you're referring to the one on page twenty, already having been posted on the website?
Accessibility statement?
Yes, and that is what's on page twenty of the packet. Okay. What comes after in the packet that says submit an issue and then has a colon and it's blank? What actually goes there?
Page you want?
Page twenty. Right above reporting accessibility issues.
Twenty of the packet.
Of the packet. Right underneath the phone number.
Where it says submitted.
It says submit an issue and then it's blank.
There's a four, there's a link. On your copy. Oh, we missed it. Needs to go.
Okay.
That link.
As long as the version on the website is.
Needs to be put there.
Okay, I just, I mean, I'm not looking at what's on the website, obviously, but
Sorry.
Probably just make sure it's correct.
Correct.
Website.
It is on the last side though with her.
Yeah.
Right.
It's the same.
Yeah.
Cool. And like I said, as long as the website version's correct, that's what actually.
Make it correct.
No one's going to come and look in this packet for this information.
So I guess what do, is there anything that we as a board will need to do between now and next July on this?
There is not. You should go ahead. If you're willing to go ahead and adopt this resolution, then the attachments can be filled in. Like I said, Amy's going to have to do that second one. And we can fill in that information, get it all posted and there you go. And we'll remind you in a year.
Right. Okay, well, then I move to adopt a digital accessibility policy and designate a compliance officer.
Is there a second?
My second?
All in favor?
Kim, we did actually complete Exhibit one, A one in the packet.
Okay.
Answered the questions to the best of our ability. There's still more detail to put to the plan and part of this, part of our process was to bring you quarterly updates and any summary of any issues that get reported on.
Then we might consider, and we could talk to talk about this as well, is it might be useful though, in one of our meetings to have someone who actually has some firsthand experience with accessibility issues come and speak to us, because obviously there is the regulatory and legal side of all of this. But I would also say like part of the reason we're doing this is because it does in fact benefit everyone to make our resources more accessible. So might be good for us to get the, we appreciate all of Kim's perspective from the legal protection, but it might also be good to get the, and here's like the people who it actually impacts. Matters side as well.
And and this this just had to do with website resources, not like
Yeah.
The resources on the shelves, so to speak.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Remember the ADA already applies to a lot of the on shelf stuff.
This, this makes the ADA applied of website.
Yeah, which we've slowly, I mean, if you work in the space, it's slowly been expanding it.
It it is pretty neat if you just pick another library or almost any government entity right now and down in the corner, there's a little circle with a kind of a man figure. Just click on, see that does, it's fascinating.
Well, I was mentioning this to Amy as well, but the CU Student Law Clinic previously did a lot of work in this space and they may still have contacts there. So I mean, I'm sure we could find someone who could. If we wanted to just have a guest speaker some night or if we want to solicit public comments on the topic, I'm sure we could find someone to do that.
If you want, we could get that streamlined company. I could get them to come and do a presentation. They they will try to sell you on their program, but we'll tell them you don't need it, but they'll, I I'm sure they'll give a presentation. They're sort of the leaders at the moment. In that space.
Are they more focused on the law, Kim?
They're focused on on meeting the accessibility standards. I like Andy's idea better.
If you've never seen someone use a screen reader before, it's impressive, but also like it's worth just understanding what that means and, you know.
Challenges.
The kinds of things that we can do to make that easier for folks.
It's also something to be aware of for our, as we're like doing more social media. Because there's like easy ways to make social media posts successful versus inaccessible. So like on Instagram, like you like describe.
Use the alt text.
Yeah, I guess just posting a photo, you'd like describe the photo and yeah, put the full text in the box and all that. So. Just be.
Yeah, and it even, I I think Amy was the first one to pointed this out, somebody here. It depends on how you, like in our office, how we save a resolution determines whether or not you can make it accessible here on the website. So just all kinds of things happening in this world. Here on the website, so just all kinds of things happening in this world. And I'm a low-tech guy. It's very different.
Other people.
Yes, that's right. Young people.
Like our next item is director updates.
Yes, so I have one item on that agenda, but I have a few other little updates, would you be interested?
Please.
If you noticed, but we finally got the new doors out here.
Ooh.
So they're working nicely, uh, they need some programming, so if you wish to exit out those doors, I'll need to help you with that. Are we going to go the other way? Uh, no, it'll be like, oh, okay, yeah, so. When we tell the door, the very front set of doors to be open, it takes that literally and it just stays open and we can't get it to like close after somebody walks through. Working on that, we just recently got control over the system that allows, uh, our facilities team to make those adjustments, and they're also working with. Uh, the company that has, that works on those controls to get that programming right, so. Little bit of success there, uh, I think it was yesterday you all received an email from a, a patron, um, with some concerns about the landscaping at. The George Reynolds Branch Library, and I received some pictures from the branch manager yesterday, just to try to confirm the complaint and. It's every bit as dire as she described, although she didn't go into great detail, um. And while that complaint came in, I was actually in a meeting with the facilities, uh, manager, and we were discussing landscaping, um, companies. He reached out to the company that manages the gun barrel property, um. And wasn't able to get a response from them until today, they called today, so they must have felt like we were talking about them or something. And he received another quote from another company, which he felt was high, but it was a company he's familiar with and worked. With, um, when he was working at the hotels in town, and so. Um, I asked him to reach out to that company and get them over there this week because we were going to have a. Outdoor program on the thirtieth of June, and the, the lawn needs to be watered. Um, intensely needs to be watered and mowed and weeds need to be pulled and bushes need to be trimmed, and so. Um, that's going to happen this week. So we're getting on it.
I don't think I got that email.
No?
Could it have gone to all?
It's not in the.
Oh, okay.
Whatever that's called, but it became in through.
There's a form.
Form, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you make sure we're added to that?
Yep. And Doug received. He did, um.
Would one of you mind just forwarding me this email, that's easy, I'll read it after the fact.
If you had it, sorry about that.
No worries.
Another update is, uh, I had a meeting, Adriana and I had a meeting with the auditor this afternoon, um, it's a different person than the one you met. I don't know when Matt Miller came, January, uh, it's one of his associates that's going to be actually doing the audit. Uh, so she asked us a series of questions, we've been submitting, um, lots of different documents to the organizer online for them. And they're going to begin, uh, going through all that information, they conduct the audit, the complete audit. Within a week and they produce a draft, and, um, they also will be emailing you some questions, and if you wish. Uh, to meet with them, you can just let them know that you want to meet with them, and you have some concerns or questions you want to share with them, and that they'd be happy to meet with you individually. Um, so you'll see, uh, coming to your, uh, district library email address, um. A question, uh, email from them with some questions. So that's going to happen, and we're, we're aiming to have the draft or at least the, yeah. The final draft ready for the July sixteenth meeting, so you don't have to have an extra meeting because it's due. It needs to be approved and submitted by July thirty-first. And lastly, uh, we're working on, well, we've placed on orders, um, some automatic doors to install. For the second floor public restrooms, they're custom, so, um. It's going to take a little time to get them manufactured, but it will allow us to open those restrooms and. Um, close them as needed, so we'll be able to, um, use those now, um, once those doors are installed. And if, um, it works well, then we can do the same thing on the first floor, we just haven't, uh, placed the order for those yet.
And so are we still doing the checking the bags before leaving the bags?
Uh, I don't know if we're, we're not doing the leaving the bags, and the, uh, officers are only scheduled at the restrooms during like high-traffic times.
Okay.
Library.
Have someone. Tell me how they felt about that.
Oh, okay.
Doing it or about not doing?
About doing it, about, yeah.
Okay, and then the, the thing that's actually on the agenda is Doug asked me to share with you the agenda for. The Novo, um, grand opening. Where do I share in this thing?
I was nobo coming along more generally, I see, I mean, the updates and, and teams seem positive.
Yes, um, lots of work's being done, there's lots of loose ends. We were supposed to get occupancy tomorrow, and it's not going to happen.
You don't have.
Don't know that was done.
We don't.
Know that was done, no. How did you guys get in there and start? Loading it up without it?
I don't know. So, uh, Monday is the new target, and if it doesn't in there, uh, I wasn't able to attend the meeting today to hear it right from the project team, but the. Um, branch manager said that they're. Fairly certain that it's going to happen Monday, and if not, then we have to come up with a contingency plan for the party, but let's hope that we don't have to go there.
Is it just city getting permitting stuff signed off, or is it an issue that they've come across?
No, they have to have the inspector come through last time. And they're hoping that they don't find anything major. Okay, oh, there it is, it's green, that's why I couldn't see it. So hadn't been, um. Following this very closely, but there's a lot planned for this party, it's, and this is just a draft that I received earlier this week, so it, there may be some changes. But it's going to be a lot of fun, um, so it's from ten AM to one on Saturday, June, June twenty-ninth. Um, Celine Cooper is the branch manager, and she's going to do a welcome and kind of emcee the, the event. Um, there's going to be live music, um, and all, all sorts of activities, can you all see that okay?
We're gonna need to pump it up.
Um, there's going to be a bilingual musical storytime with Melanie and Rosina, um. The storytime group marches to the event stage and plays a song, and then there are going to be the formal program from the stage, and speaker order is Celine. And she will inter, introduce the mayor, and then the mayor will speak and then turn it over to David, and then Chris Barge will speak. Sam Bukla, and then, um, the Office of Arts and Culture Manager will speak. And then the artists, uh, for the musical walkway will speak. And then more live music, and there'll be a meet and greet with the artists in the community room, and then the event will conclude. At one PM, there's going to be food trucks, there's a whole like space where all these activities happening all together. Um, I hear from others who have had a chance to either go to the library, take a tour recently, that it's just amazingly beautiful and. Clean and bright, and it's going to be lots of fun. Um, Kate, I was speaking to Kate Kelch about this event, she's been doing a lot of work trying to get the word out to the communities around Novo. And I asked her what, how we could help, um, during the, during the event, and she said it, it'd be great if. You could introduce yourself to people you don't know and try to make connections with library staff or. Other people in the community you might know, and really try to encourage people that show up and make them feel welcome, she says, uh, uh. People need to be encouraged to, to feel welcome, and so that's, that's how we can be helpful at the event. Any questions?
What do we anticipate the parking will be like?
So the parking lot is going to be reserved for the event attendees, so the patrons, um, there's a staff parking. Um, spot where the construction trailer used to be, I think that's off of Fourteenth Street, I actually can. Send you the map, um, parking, and then it looks like. Um, we've designated or identified parking across the street at some of the local businesses, and perhaps they've, I assume they've asked for permission for that, so there's a couple of. Like overflow parking lots that people can use.
Also right off the Broadway bus line.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah, do that.
Right, that's it? All good stuff. The, uh, next agenda item is trustee matters. Anything that's not on the agenda? So it looks like on the agenda, we need to set a special meeting for July second. Can set a special meeting for July second, I'm not sure.
Julia, do we have anything on the agenda pending for that meeting yet?
Already have it on my calendar.
And yes. Just I think I would have it.
Yeah.
Does it have a placeholder on the calendar?
Yes, okay.
Sure, it's a holiday week, but.
Yeah.
It's private.
Holidays.
Yeah.
Policy policy, the only thing, and the approval of the Warner Terrible Trust, that's.
Those can both be held if you choose not to, I think one thing that Doug. Was thinking that might occur during that meeting is any kind of preliminary information about the audit process, but. I, I honestly don't know if we'll have anything to present at that time.
Oh, do we need a special meeting on the second, or am I hearing that we don't?
When's our next regular meeting?
Sixteen. So would we have another meeting besides the sixteenth in July, or would that be the only meeting if we didn't have the special meeting? It's the only one that's set right now. But we do have to, no, that's July, the audit?
Sixth on sixty.
Well, that's how, that's the regular meeting.
Okay.
Now we can. Treasure report that one too.
Okay.
I will not be here. Available by Zoom, just.
For the sixteenth or the?
Sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Will be home the sixteenth?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I could also do the second if we have to.
Yeah, I could do, I can do both of them.
Sixteen, I can't be here. I don't, I don't know, it sounds like maybe there's not really an agenda for the second, if we have a meeting.
Those are the things I know about, there may be other things that Doug is thinking about, I don't know.
Need to vote to.
You just cancel it if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, do we need, like, should we vote, and should we just not take action and wait and see if people, or do we need to?
That you cancel it?
Yeah.
If you said it, then I don't know what happens.
You can reset it, well, you'd have to have a meeting to set it, so.
Okay, so why don't we, maybe we set it?
Good evening, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes, please complete your library business and exit the building, thank you.
Do we have a, can we vote on things in the middle?
Buenas noches, la biblioteca se cerrará en quince minutos. Por favor concluyas sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga de la discisión, gracias.
In separately from a meeting?
Yeah, like if we set it now, we, could we even take an official action to cancel it between now and the meeting?
You, you could set, uh, sorry, lose my voice again, um, you could go ahead and set it now and leave it up to Jennifer and David and Celia. Cancel it if there's nothing important.
Okay, why don't we do that? Yeah, let's, yeah. Yeah, in case Doug was thinking of something else.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there a motion? Do we usually, do we need a motion?
Nope.
Is this conversation?
You just say we're doing.
Great, uh, all right, well, it looks like the next thing is legal counsel updates.
Uh, nothing to add to what we've already done tonight, so.
We're going to get done before seven?
I mean. Old meeting, I think, of our entire existence.
Needs to be interdled.
Nothing, I don't think this is anything.
Toast.
All right, well, in that case, I guess this meeting returns.
All right, congratulations.
Yeah.